We're live.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Trotwood Madison City School Board Work Session, May 7, 2020, to order. This is a virtual Google meets platform in compliance with COVID-19 and the protocols for safety. Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Yes. Mrs. Judith Freeman?
Here.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. We have a quorum and the meeting is now called to order. Ms. Bozeman, will you please do the honors in leading us in a pledge of allegiance? And if everybody could mute their mics, trust me, it'll go very smoothly.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. I now need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any changes, additions, addendums that need to be added to the agenda? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Judith Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. The agenda has been adopted. We're going to move on. We are in for a treat tonight. We have our CFO, Janice Allen, who's doing a May five-year forecast. What we'll do is, if it's okay and the pleasure of the board, we'll let Ms. Allen get through the presentation and then we will ask questions.
Can you see the?
Yes.
Okay, wait, wait, sorry. Sorry, sorry. Okay, can you see it?
We can.
Okey dokey. So I am wanting to present the five-year forecast for May that has to be presented and submitted before the end of May by May 31. So as most, well, as everyone knows that we have two five-year forecasts that we are required by law to submit, one in November and the second one in May. And the one in May basically is a summation of what the entire fiscal year has been. And most times we know, and I say most times at this point because there's so many unknowns, but at this point, we have some of the actuals in the five-year forecast for May. But again, there are a lot of unknowns. So I wanted to go over some of the facts and assumptions for this particular five-year forecast. After I go through the presentation, I would then put up the five-year forecast document. All of these documents and the presentation are available on Board Docs as attachments. And so you can either pull those up as I'm going along or obviously you can see them on the screen. So I want to begin by talking about revenue, forecast, facts, and assumptions. And so for property taxes, we have a slight decline for FY20, $125,000 from the November estimate. And this is nothing new, was no surprise. And obviously, this is going to continue. We're not sure what it's going to look like. But at this point, we know that the actuals that we have received for property taxes were $125,000 less than our November estimate. State foundation dollars, and I smile about this because on Tuesday about, I think, 2:00, I actually uploaded the five-year forecast, put it on Board Docs, and I think, I'm not sure, like 5:00, Marlon Howard, Mr. Howard was texting me about what the Governor Dewine had talked about in his forecast, so, in his budget. So when I talk through this, obviously, there's some changes and I'll talk through those as well. And so for the May five-year forecast, we have projected the state foundation dollars to be flat. And as I said, in the presentation, there were rumors that there would be a 20% decrease due to the COVID-9 pandemic. We just found out officially yesterday that our district will have a $306,000 decrease in our state foundation monies for the last three payments. And those are the last payment in May and two payments in the month of June. So as I said, at the time when I was doing the presentation, there was a lot of unknowns. We do know for sure for FY, the end of FY20, what the reductions will be. But obviously, we don't know what FY21 will bring us. And we're hoping before the end of June that potentially that they will have something on FY21. This is some good news of our open enrollment. What we passed last year, we have seen a significant increase in revenue due to our open enrollment. And so it increased almost by $600,000. So if you want to equate that to students, it was about 85 additional students that came into our district from outside of the Trotwood District that did not, that now attends our school. So that was a good thing that we decided upon because that did increase our revenue. On the flip side, our interest income, I have been on many, many calls, webinars, had a very good webinar this morning about our interest rates and what our economic decline means for interest. And at this point, our interest rates are going down significantly. It's been something of a bragging point for our district that our interest income had been so high because our investments were coming in, the investment income was coming in so high. I just looked at our investment income through March and it was $518,000. Now, probably from April, May, and June, obviously, it won't increase that much because the interest income or the interest percentages have decreased significantly. Just an FYI that we are getting other monies. And the other monies that we're getting, we were slated and had gotten $622,000 from the Student Wellness and Success Funds. That is not general fund dollars, but I just wanted to let, again, let the board know that we did receive that money and we are expecting to receive $896,037 in FY21, and that is Student Wellness and Success monies. In addition to that, and I'm getting information on this now and just wanting to make sure that everything that I'm getting is going to come to fruition, the Federal Cares Act, our initial estimates are $2.2 million. Part of that, there's a part, there's a cares part, and then there's a elementary and secondary education part. So with both of those parts, we are supposed to get $2.2 million. There are some restrictions on that money. And obviously, there has to be some discussion and will be just some discussions on how that money is supposed to be spent. But the expenses are supposed to be related to the coronavirus. And some of those monies could be spent on the educational realm, meaning online learning, and I didn't put this, but online learning and obviously any sanitation or PPE kind of things that we might have to do for our district. And then also, we can include summer school and after school, and then also the mental health component as well. So our community school transfer, okay, I don't know how to go back, but now, as I talk about our expenditures, community school transfer is a large expenditure out of our general fund monies. On an annual basis, almost $5 million annually, but we've seen a decrease of about $532,000 in FY20. And that has been because there is a decrease in the number of students attending these schools, or there is more of, the reporting is better. So, you know, if the charter schools are reporting the accurate numbers, then this could potentially, obviously, affect the amount of money that is going out of our district. And so at this time, the transfer was decreased this total year by about a half million, which is a very good thing. Other expenditure forecast, facts, and assumptions was obviously because we closed down the physical part of the schools after March. Our supplies and material line was reduced. But on the flip side, we will have anticipated purchase of computers for student online learning in FY20. So our estimates were also reducing '22 through '24 for materials and supplies. Capital outlay was another area that was reduced, and that was reduced by $150,000 from the November estimate. And in '21 through '24, there will be no bus purchases. So I just put together some of these spreadsheets just to give you some idea of variances. So when I talked about the November forecast, I'm comparing that to the May forecast. So you can see the property taxes that I spoke about, the variance in the estimate was 7.6 million. We have gotten receipts of 7.5 million. So that was a decrease of $108,000 from the November forecast. State foundation, we left the same. The homestead and rollback that we get, that's credits that we get from the state, that just reduced a little bit. And other revenue, which is what I talked about with the open enrollment, that increased by 474. So overall, the revenue total increased by $347,000. On the expenditure side, from the November to May, we kept the salaries from November to May the same because the same, basically, this fiscal year. Retirement was the same. Purchased services, we were able to reduce. Supplies and materials, capital outlay, as I talked about, 150,000. So that, oops, so that total for the expenditure was $782,000 that we were able to reduce in the May forecast. This slide is revenue versus expenditures, your blue line, and I'm sorry, now as I'm looking at this, the blue line, hold on one second, let me. Okay, so you can't see this, and the slide needs to be updated, but the blue line is the revenue, the red line is expenditures, and obviously, the green line is the end in cash balance. So as you can see, the revenue has been consistent. Here, the revenue is consistent. The expenditures are above the revenue. And obviously, we talk about, I always say the alligator mouth, but this is actually deficit spending. And then obviously, as you deficit spend, the end in cash balance decreases. This is the estimated general fund revenue. And this slide, I just wanted to just show that, and it doesn't show, but our state foundation is 76% of our revenues. So as we talk, and I'll talk a little bit more about the state income, as we talk about state income, 76% of our revenues are affected. And that's why we have to keep a close eye and watch on what the state's doing, what is happening in the state due to the coronavirus, because all of that affects what we're going to get from the state. I just had challenges to the operating revenue. We received a letter from the County Commission, and because of the coronavirus, they have asked the Tax Commissioner to move back the property due dates to August. And so what that will mean, we say August settlement, we normally get the August settlement in September. So we're thinking, because they moved it back a couple months, we probably won't get that money until November. And so that, again, the collections that we're getting will be delayed. I wanted to just let you guys know that. And then I talked about interest rates. Interest rates are almost near zero. Before, we were getting interest rates between 2% and 3%. And now the interest rates are near zero. And that obviously is bad on our part because our interest income then will be affected. And I have to apologize for these slides because you guys are not, and I'm not sure if you can see the same thing on your, what I put on Board Docs, and I'll check that out as well. But this was the operating expenditures, and it just showed basically, and the takeaway from this is I wanted to just show that the wages and benefits represents about 70% of the total general fund expenditures. And that is in line with what a typical district or corporation has in terms of wages and benefits. So the last slide, the last slide I wanted to show is just a summary. I just wanted to reiterate that the state resources represent 80%, 76% of the district revenues. And because of this pandemic, we're in a position that we've never seen before. Even back in 2008 through 2010, when there were some decreases, we've never seen anything like this. And so this is uncharted territory. And so again, there are going to be a lot more discussions in terms of state revenue and what share our district will get. I just, as an FYI, FY21 budgets obviously have to be aligned to our May five-year forecast. Our May five-year forecast might change every week, every two weeks. Revenue obviously is going to change by $306,000. And depending on other information that we received, there might be other changes. And so it's going to be fluid until things kind of level off and we can see a clearer picture. Whoops, wait, whoops. Okay. So I just said the last line, I said, we are going to have to create a new normal. Obviously, we had some savings from the early school closure. And then obviously, on the other hand, the district will have to make those additional purchases, such as the thermometers, the sanitation equipment, and the other PPE type of equipment. And so I wanted to just talk a little bit about the reductions that we received yesterday, or the, well, I obviously said on Tuesday, but I saw them on Wednesday. Just Vanessa had sent me a text today to ask about the per pupil funding, and I wanted to let everyone know that if you look at the report, the state foundation funding, we get $28.7 million. If you divide that by our ADM, which is 3,260, and what ADM is, is average daily membership, that is the total number of students that live in the Trotwood District. That's not the number of students that we educate, it's the number of students that live there. So if you divide that into the $28.7 million, that equals $8,823, and that's per pupil funding. So the adjusted per pupil reduction, very, very complicated. They came up with a figure for our district of $94, and that is equated to us being a lower wealth district. And so if you multiply $94 times the 3,260, you will get the $306,399 that they will be reducing our state revenue. And so that. So I'm done. That was, that was all that I had to present today. And obviously, if there's questions, hopefully, I can answer your questions. And if not, I will go back to the drawing board, get the information, and get back with you.
Janice, has there been a comparative analysis of what we anticipated to spend through the rest of the year compared to the reduction? Have we started to think about that yet?
Okay.
How that equates?
In terms of the $306,000 reduction?
Well, we were planning to spend for the rest of the year, based upon the calculations, and then how that equates to the reduction.
Yeah, I didn't do a comparison with that, but I can.
Okay.
But I think what you're getting at, the three, obviously, we've saved a lot of money. And so the $306,000 for the last three months from April, May, and June, obviously, it's going to be a lot more than the 306. So I'm not, you know, really, really nervous right now because our financial, our five-year can support that. But I am concerned then going forward in FY21, what those reductions could potentially look like. And that is a major, major concern.
Have you also heard that the governor's considering tapping into the rainy day fund to establish consistent levels of foundation payments for districts?
Yeah. Yeah, I heard that. Well, first thing I heard, the rainy day fund, he did not want to tap in initially.
Next year, for next year.
Yeah, so they're still up in the air. And like I said, until we know for sure what they're going to do, we just, or like almost in a holding pattern.
Are there any other questions for Janice?
I have one. You mentioned that we would, of course, have to pay for sanitation and all that kind of stuff, PPEs. But didn't you also say that that would be coming out or could come out of, I guess?
The care, yeah.
Yeah, the care. Federal cares. So that wouldn't come out of general fund necessarily?
Yeah, exactly, exactly, exactly.
And I'll be honest with you, Ms. Bozeman, that's a great question. We had a conference call today with the county superintendents, and everybody is just kind of waiting on some guidance to see what that looks like. You know, are we going to be required to wear masks if he is every day? Are we going to be required to provide PPE for staff? So we're just kind of on a holding pattern, as Janice kind of said, just to kind of see what that looks like. Because if we don't have to expend all of those funds, then we can utilize those funds for some other things, specifically remote learning, which is something that we want to make sure that whichever way we go in the fall, we're ready one way or another. So that was, that was some deep dialogue today about what are they going to say? If we come back to school, we are responsible for providing.
Because in some cases, sanitation almost feels like something that could be donated. I don't know, you know what I mean? Like the mask or something. That could almost be donation worthy, you know, from, I don't know, community or whatever.
And we've made some, you know, we've made some very inexpensive moves already with regards to moving to an aerosol-sized sanitation disinfectant-type product. We're putting up, I don't want to call them splash guards, but guards, plastic guards in front of all of the desks. So we're doing some real inexpensive things. We're just trying to see if there's going to be a high level. Everybody needs to do this. Everybody has to do this, then that's where we'll be, you know, trying to tap into that money. But right now, we're just doing some little things based upon some guidance that we see. So like, when you come into the offices within the next couple of weeks, we're going to have those plastic, those plastic guards up. So, you know, people are having conversations. Our folks on the other end, they're talking through a plastic barrier. So we're doing some inexpensive things, but like I said, we're just kind of waiting to see, is there going to be something overarching that everybody has to purchase?
Gotcha.
You know, I think one of the things that I haven't heard the governor say that he has is with all the different areas, when you think about it, so there should be a K through 12 task force that looks at and includes conversation with the superintendents and with other educational people so that there's input. So you get some from southwest region, you get some from each of the regions, and not just within Columbus. So that is one of the things we really, really need to push for, is that educational task force for K-12 on reopening the schools, what does that look like? Because when I heard that there was talk of having, okay, two days online and three days in class, what does that do to families that have children? What kind of daycare is set up like that?
So I'll speak to that a little bit with the call we had today. Everybody is on the same page with what you're saying with regards to the task force that are educational people versus, you know, our governor, who I think has been doing a great job. But sometimes he says things, and we spoke about this before, and people hold on to those every word.
Right.
You know, with regards to especially that whole two-day on, two-day off, that's something that may work in a district with a little more fluency, that their kids are fully logged in, their parents may be able to work from home. But what about our folks? Some of the folks in our district, most of the folks in our district that have to go to work. So there's a lot of conversation out there now about that. And that is in the works, from what I understand.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, Mr. Howard, I'm glad you hit on that federal care grant because, again, we're not real clear and haven't gotten a clarification as to how those monies can really be spent. But what I was thinking initially is what you said, more remote learning, like more Chromebooks, more technology, internet, broadband.
I hope so. I hope so. I definitely hope we can tap into that. And we've got some preliminary plans in place, and I'll talk about that a little later. But yeah, I hope so. But again, if there's some overarching directive, you know, we just have to be, kind of sit back and be patient to see, you know, to see if that happens. But if not, you know, the autonomy to be able to utilize it for those types of things would be great. And that's something, a recommendation I'd be making to Dr. Cosby.
Okay, wonderful. Who's joining us tonight?
Ms. Moore, if you wouldn't mind, I was going to put up the five-year, if you guys want to just take a quick look at that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So let me, let me do my present now, your entire screen. Can you guys see it?
Yeah, we can see it. It's tiny on my end.
Wait a minute, I'm going to enlarge it. Can you see it better?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I just wanted to go over this briefly. On the left-hand side, you'll see actual numbers for 2017, 2018, and 2019. And on the right side is a forecast for this fiscal year, '21, '22, '23, and '24. So the revenues that I talked about, property tax here, and the tangible personal property tax and property tax allocation, those all go into the property taxes. And then your unrestricted and restricted monies are here from the state. So at this, at this point, we have So at this, at this point, we have twenty-six and twenty-six million dollars for unrestricted and three-point-two million dollars and restricted. And so this piece, this twenty-six million piece, needs to be reduced by the three hundred and six thousand dollars. So I'm just going to move it down a little bit. Expenditures I talked about are salaries and benefits. This is the number that we are estimating that we're going to hit this year. And purchase services, we reduce that amount, we reduce the supplies and materials amount, and we reduce the capital outlay. And so if you go all the way down to the bottom, then by those reductions, enabled our forecast then to be increased by the three-point-five million. I, you know, before I would be jumping up and down, yay, yay, yay. But everything is so uncertain at this point. And another week or two weeks, that three-point-five million might be back to what we, we have before, two hundred thousand dollars. And so I just want to caution everyone that this is a fluid document. This is what we know right now. But there will be changes in the next week, two weeks, month, two months. And so this is the best guesstimate at this point, but we need to proceed from there. So what I wanted to do is to, to, to show you all the before. And then for the twenty-first, you will see a reduction here, just in this, just in this line. I'm sorry, just in this, I'm sorry, let's see. State foundation line up here. And then this, the total should change here. But I wanted to get more information on that before I changed it. But, but there will be a slight change, just, just on the one line. We, we don't anticipate changing anything else, but just the revenue line. So what I plan to do is I will send you guys an email, have you, have this attached, have you to look at it, and then, then present that for approval on the twenty-first because that has to be approved. And I have to then file that, I'm, I'm hoping to file that the next, on that Friday to the state.
Okay. That, that, that works. So we'll look for your email. And does anyone have any further questions from Ms. Allen? Okay. We're going to go ahead and move into our board report. And if you guys recall, we tabled this particular item at our last regular meeting, wanting to make sure that we could get some clarification as to compensation. And also check in with our legal department to make sure that we were being compliant in, in the verbiage. So this particular item is a resolution to approve the continued operations of schools during the pendency of executive order twenty-twenty zero-one D, the Ohio Department of Health Director's Order regarding the closure of all districts K twelve schools in the state of Ohio and passage of the amended substitute HB one ninety-seven resolution. And this item is actually up for action. So I need a motion on the floor to accept the item A as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? The only thing that I'd like to say about this is if, I'm, I'm sure everybody's had an opportunity to read through it. And it's pretty clear and concise along the lines of what's consistent across the state of Ohio. Marlin, did you want to say anything? I know that you personally worked with legal to make sure that some of our concerns about moving forward with the ancillary positions and grant positions were addressed. You're on.
Well, I wanted to thank Dr. Cosby again because she provided a template for us. We were working to try to get a template, and she just shot one over. So we, we've kind of mirrored her template. But in, in, in a nutshell, all of the, the aspects of, of school business that needed to have some, some, some closure or some verification were included in, in this document, specifically the, the state teacher evaluation system where we could, well, not we could, but the board could declare evaluations impractical based on the COVID shutdown. And then what we agreed to with TMEA with regards to where folks would land on contract, contracts heading into the next year, payment continuance of, of standard contract, standard contracts, supplemental contracts, spring supplemental contracts, the vacation carryover clause that allows, that allows the treasurer to gives the treasurer autonomy to allow folks to carry over vacation balances if they can't take those balances via the, via the pandemic. The board meeting resolution, which we've talked about on several different occasions, pretty much, it, it's, it's kind of a catch-all with regards to a lot of those things, graduation requirements, suspension of the grading policy, the interscholastic eligibility policy, which OHSSA came out with about two weeks ago, their guidance for that, which is very specific. Everybody has a clean slate for fourth quarter. So what we did is just plugged in our board policies that conflict with some of HB one ninety-seven. And what this document, what this resolution does is just provide that autonomy to make sure that we, we hit all those points to allow the continuance of business per the, per, per the, the HB.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good. And I know, did you say that we were going to be consistent with the spring contracts, ancillary contracts?
Spring athletic supplementals, yes. Because they were board-approved, we are going to pay the full athletic supplement, for athletic supplementals based upon what the, what the coaches have done prior and what we're going to be asking them to do as we move forward. We're going to require them to do, ask them to do some, some online PD, provide some support and a couple of different things. But these are only paid to those coaches that have submitted all of the proper, proper documentation and are qualified for the positions.
Are there any other questions?
I just had a comment on what Mr. Howard said in terms of the supplementals.
We, we can't see you, Ms. Allen.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
We saw your hair.
Can you see me now?
Yes.
I'm, I'm working on two computers. So the supplementals, I just wanted to say that through the conversation that I've had with being on the Auditor of State Committee, the auditor, auditor has recommended that when we do pay those supplementals in full, again, as Marlin had mentioned, that those individuals do produce a document or their, their boss produces a document to substantiate that they have done something in terms of the spring athletics. They also have recommended that we look at the fall contracts and not to, to necessarily put the fall contracts on quickly. We just need to know what's going to happen in, in the fall prior to us putting any supplemental fall contracts on. So I just wanted to say that.
And in our, in our meeting today with the, with the county superintendents, one of the common things that a lot of them were, were discussing, a lot of the superintendents were discussing was putting just the head coaches on, but not approving any assistance at this point. So that's some further dialogue I can have with Ms. Cosby, and she can share with you guys. But putting the head coaches in place so they can still manage the operational aspects of those, of those athletic and supplemental, supplemental positions, but not hiring any assistance until we, we kind of knew where we were a little later in the fall.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Thank you, Ms. Allen. If there are no further questions, Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Judith Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes. Item four is our treasurer's report.
I have several items this evening under four, A, B, and C. The first one is the approval of meeting minutes from April second, twenty-twenty, and April sixteenth, twenty-twenty. This, again, is just for information. The next one is the approval of the May five-year forecast. Again, that is just for information. And the third item, item C, is attached on board docs. And it is a, an amended or an updated appropriation document. And I've highlighted the, only the three items that were, were increased. And those items were increased because we received more money in the grants. And Title One, five seventy-two, Improving Teacher Quality Fund, five ninety. And we received some Title Four money in five ninety-nine. And so the appropriations, the total appropriations is for fifty-four million, six hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty cents. And that's all I had this evening.
Okay. Any questions?
All right, I have a question. Are you guys still having the financial committee meet, the finance committee?
Yes, we actually met last month, and last month, April, yes. So we will have another meeting on the twenty-first, yes.
And you're doing virtual meetings, correct?
Yeah, now I'm thinking, did we do virtual, did we do, yeah, did we do virtual? Yeah. Vanessa, I can't remember.
It was just last year?
Yeah, it was virtual.
Was it virtual? I know, it's just.
Virtual meeting.
Yeah, it's just all running together, right?
Yeah, we got so many, yes. So yes, we will definitely plan on doing that on the twenty-first.
Wonderful, thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome.
Next up, our superintendent's report, Mr. Howard, please.
Thank you. Just three items today for information. The first item A is the approval of the Meta Solutions Master Service Agreement for the school year twenty-twenty-one. This is our standard contract with Meta Solutions, who manages all of our student and, and operational data. It's a common contract that we do at the, at the end of every school year heading into the next year. Item B is a approval of a donation. And this is, this, this is kind of an exceptional, an exceptional entity that T-Mobile just reached out to us. Due to the pandemic, their marketing department had some additional funds. And they wanted to try to find community-based ways to spend those funds. And they reached out to our food service department. And they wanted to make a donation to us for three thousand dollars for food service. And what we plan to do is utilize that to buy, buy additional food, bags specifically. If you know anything about what we're doing on Wednesdays, we're packing, packing bags for folks. So one of the, the direct expenses will be bags, but this is a donation from T-Mobile. And no strings attached, they just reached out to us, community-based. And they wanted to ensure that they were spending some of their marketing budget in a, in a, in a positive way. And then item C is approval of the personnel agenda. A-one is a recommendation of approval of the following certified administrative contracts. A-two, recommendation for approval of the following certified staff for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Those are two teachers, Westbrook Village, replacing staff that either resigned or left, or resigned, I'm sorry. A-three is a recommendation for the approval of the following certified summer school staff at the negotiated committee pay rate. And of course, all of this will be based on enrollment and processes. And Ms. Minor will speak to that a little bit later as well. B-one, the recommendation of classified resignations. B-two, the recommendation of classified employment. A-three, the recommendation of approval of classified summer staff. And that concludes the personnel agenda for this evening.
Okay. It's good to know that you answered my question in your description of the donation that we don't have to go with T-Mobile phones or any, there's no strings attached. That's a good thing to know. Additionally, and, and maybe I can wait until Ms. Minor talks about staff. Because in this climate and during this difficult time, I'm just curious how we are looking with staffing and how we're moving forward with making sure that we have adequate staff when we get back into school, if and when that is in the very near future. That would be important for us.
And Ms. Minor can speak to that summer school staff, I can speak to twenty-twenty-one. We have still been actively pursuing candidates for open positions we have. Now with the COVID nineteen exemption for teacher evaluations, all of our staff that, that were not evaluated are coming back. So across the, across the state, most people have kind of moved this way. So you're not going to see a whole lot of, a whole lot of, of, of empty positions, a whole lot of job fair hunts, those types of things as we've standard, we've done in the past. Because the, the common understanding is that, is that most folks will want to come back with the understanding that there are going to be some, some contractual language that we, that we've worked our way through. But right now, we are, I, I, I'm, I'm almost certain we've got about five or six positions that we have that are currently open, that are, we, we are still actively seeking candidates for, which at this time for us is pretty, it's pretty good. So, so we are, but we are still, we've, we've managed several interviews virtually. Both of these teachers from Westbrook were interviewed and hired virtually. We've also interviewed several other folks virtually. So we are still proceeding with business as usual. And Bonnie Terry from the ESC has been, been a, a, an outstanding avenue of support for us because she's kind of been managing all of that. And we're still, we're still pressing the law. So the, the question again is, is what does school look like in the fall? And then as that comes about, then there may have to be other discussions. But there seem to be a lot of people that believe we're going to be in school in the fall. And one of them, I'm going to drop his name, is Tom Lasley, the former, former Dean of Education at the University of Dayton. On the conference call today with him and the other superintendents. He, he said he, he thinks we're going to be in school in the fall because folks can't afford daycare. They can't afford, you know, so those are some of the things that are just kind of out there. But with that being said, I'm sorry, I'm getting off topic.
No, no, you're good.
Yeah, we are, we are currently still pursuing candidates for some of the open positions we have.
Yeah, I, I can just imagine what it's going to look like with everybody in full PPE, right, Mr. Superintendent?
That's, that's scary.
Does anybody have anything else from Mr. Howard? Then if not, we're going to move down into discussion items and update. Mr. Howard, please talk to us about graduation.
Okay, hopefully, everyone received the, the graduation information that we, that we, with the high school, high school staff have put together. Of course, it is, is unprecedented, it's, it's different. But I will say that today, we had step one, where we distributed caps and gowns to students. And it was incredible. It was incredible. I don't know if anybody got a chance to see some of the stuff that was posted on social media. We had kids crying, we had teachers crying, we had parents crying. Because they're starting to understand, this is where we're living right now, this is what it is. And regardless of how you feel, we may know you want to have that graduation ceremony for your kid. People are really starting to empathize with the plight of everybody. And, and I think if you would have seen what went on today, just the fact that the kids were so happy that they got to see their teachers and that they're going to be recognized, it was, it was incredible. It was, it was, it was heart-wrenching. But it's only half of what we plan on doing on the sixteenth. So on the sixteenth, we're planning to have a, a drive-in ceremony. We've got, got a lot of stuff, music, a stage, balloon. We got, we got a lot of stuff that we're going to try to, to really celebrate and, and memorialize the special class of twenty-twenty. Because this group, they've been through so much, starting from the tornadoes to now, and, and they made it. And, and they made it. So we're really excited about that. And some of the angst that some of the, some of the dissenting parents had, it was really kind of hushed. Today, I don't know if that's the right word, but it was really kind of, they really got an opportunity to see how all out our staff is going to go for these kids. To ensure we have an opportunity to celebrate them, but they're safe as well. It wa- it was incredible. It was incredible.
Did they get their yard signs today too?
Yes, they did. One thing that, uh, I know you and I talked about is about pictures. Every kid did not take a composite, so they just got standard yard signs that said, a trotwood grad lives here. Congrats, class of two thousand twenty. We wanted to personalize them, but we weren't able to because most of the kids didn't get their composites based upon, you know, that's one of the things, it's kind of last minute that a lot of them do. But yes, they got the yard signs, they got their capping gowns, they got to see their friends and their teachers. And it was, uh, it wa- it was really, it was really, all of the teachers were in PPE, smiling, waving, crying. It was, uh, it was really, uh, really a wonderful thing to see.
Uh, Mr. Howard?
Yes, sir.
As I've driven through the, the area I live in, uh, it kind of, uh, butts on to, uh, Northmont. And I've seen, uh, two or three different, uh, variations on their yard signs. And, uh, if there's any consolation, uh, none of them have, uh, photos on them. It just states pretty much what, what you're saying, Howard state. It just says, Northmont grad, twenty twenty, and that's, that's kind of the end of it. So, so, uh, we're doing, we're doing good. And that, that was really good to hear, uh, the reception of, uh, phase one today. That's, that's really, uh, that shows everybody's really kind of pitching in and, and, and accepting and, and, and supporting what we're trying to do.
And, and I think we had, I think we had eighty percent of our staff there today.
Outstanding.
They were all spread out. It was, it was incredible. It was incredible. Yeah.
Ram Nation.
Yeah, coming together.
Another question.
So with, um, so with that, on the, on the thirteenth, uh, we are going to pre-record all of the speeches. Um, there's already been a schedule sent out for all of the speeches. ROTC will be presenting the flag. Uh, Mr. Jeter, one of the staff members, uh, presenting the colors, I'm sorry, is going to sing the national anthem and, uh, possibly sing another song. Uh, and then that along with what takes place on the sixteenth will all be loaded into a produced virtual graduation. And then that will be distributed, we'll tag it to, to whoever we can. And we're working to ensure that every kid gets a copy of it as well.
Nice. Here's my question.
Yes.
When they come on the, what is that, the sixteenth?
Yes.
And they cross the stage?
Yes.
Will they receive their diplomas?
We, we are working on that, uh, at, as of right now and, and through that point. Uh, printing and ensuring that we have enough staff to manage as kids. Because, because the, the, the contention with that was alphabetizing them. Because the cars are not going to come in alphabetized. Well, they're going to come in in a sense alphabetized. You have an eighteenth timeframe, but you won't actually be alphabetized. So what, what we talked about, uh, three days ago, two days ago, is having a staff member with a radio at the entrance, making a call and trying to ensure that when we call Marlon Howard, we can pull his diploma, and then when they come and get that presentation, we can give it to him. So yes, we are actively trying to do that. We're waiting on.
Right.
It's so, it's so crazy because Johnston, Life Touch, all of these folks have laid people off. So that's one of the things that we're dealing with as well. Uh, Life Touch initially was going to take our pictures, pictures, but they don't have any, they don't have any photographers right now. They laid them all off. So we've, uh, we got a backup plan, and we're going to ensure that we get, we get it done. So if we can get all those pieces lined up, we should be able to give those, the kids their diplomas on the sixteenth.
Okay. That would be amazing and awesome, especially given that they've already struggled. And I know that at the end of the day, to walk away with a sleeve, it's good. Because we've done these, this whole look, you know, we've got the whole look of what we're doing. But gosh, to have a graduate, the, the diploma in their hands, especially since you said that they are allowed, what, two carloads themselves?
Right, two carloads of, of, uh, of family and friends.
Okay, and I just know that they're going to treasure that diploma, because really, that's all they have to hold on to. So thank you. Thank you for working really, really hard trying to make that happen.
And I, you know, to the last minute, uh, whether or not we can get those done. We are working on them diligently and we hope to have, um, have those diplomas ready to go.
Thank you. You know, this is a really big deal because I've talked with, um, some other districts. And believe it or not, their kids aren't getting anything. They're just going to mail the diplomas. And the fact that we're doing all the, as much as we can and doing extra, that means a lot. So I just thank you and, and thank the staff that are working, um, to make all of this happen.
And, and I want to give kudos to, to Mr. McCray too, because one, one of the things that he and I went back and forth about is, Mike, I, I need, I need, I need your plan. I need your plan. And he said, he said, Marlon, just, let's just wait a minute. Let's just wait. Because things were changing so much. And, and I know places like, uh, like, I don't want to mention other local school districts, but there were several school districts that were planning in-person graduations. And then the governor came on and said, that's not going to happen. And then he came back on and said, well, maybe it could happen. And then public health came out and said, no, that shouldn't happen. So we waited, we, we, we got the most direct guidance that we could. Mike and his team put together a plan, and they moved forward and they're ready to go. And, and now their goal is to have fun with it. That's what their goal is to do, is to have a lot of fun, uh, with the sixteen.
Okay, um, I'm excited. Now, the actual graduation is going to be on the twenty-ninth, the preview of the virtual?
The plan is to release, release the virtual graduation no later than the twenty-ninth, as early as the twenty-sixth. And, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know, those are just some of those technical pieces that we got to get all together. But, uh, no later than the twenty-ninth, as early as the twenty-sixth.
Wonderful. Any other questions? If not, summer school.
Uh, I brought Ms. Minor in, and she can kind of touch base on, um, our plans for summer school heading into the, uh, next couple of months.
Well, thank you, Mr. Howard, and, uh, evening everyone. Um, I'm just excited about graduation. That sounds wonderful. Um, but, uh, as you know, we've been planning for summer school. And since we had the closures in March, the back of our mind, we said, we're probably going to have to go online. And in preparation for, or as, in March, when we prepared to go online, we had about three days to prepare. And the teachers did a wonderful job, Google Classroom's up, instruction happening, um, packets for kids that didn't have devices. So our goal was to really do a good job and a model job for the virtual experience in the summer, being that we have more time. So we've done research, uh, with best practices throughout the nation of what, what does virtual schools look like? And there are three things they came up with for an effective, uh, virtual learning experience. Is to have a strong learning management system, just the curriculum every day, standard structured programming that's interactive, an assessment system, and a strong professional learning system. So what we've done is we've partnered with the county, and we actually have a learning management system that we'll be able to present. Um, that our K-five program will run from Monday through Thursday, from nine-thirty to twelve-thirty. Students will have access, they will have a reading lesson, math lesson, STEM lesson, and enrichment. We've partnered with an organization called Quest Gymnastics to do virtual movement for the students. And Darren Bell is going to do his music technology online for the students. Um, one thing they say with online learning, they shouldn't be on the computer continuously, like for hours. But you have things called brain breaks and kind of like mini recess. Teachers can do small group instruction. So we have it set up for a teacher, a one-to-twenty ratio, a little bit larger than the face-to-face, but a para with it. So teachers will be able to present the lessons, let one half of the group go off, do small group instruction. And the paras will be doing instructional tutoring for students needing extra support. We'll also have the help desk running. We were one of the few, what I was told, um, maybe the only districts that set up a help desk right away for families and students, um, and teachers needing support during this time. So they'll run also through the summer especially. Um, so we're really looking forward to that. So that's the K-five. For the six-eight, we have a group of students that are accelerated, meaning grade level acceleration. They're going to get extra support, so they're ready for that next grade since they're advanced. And we also are offering intervention for any students or families that want their children to have extra support in reading and math. We'll have an online tutoring program for that. And the high school team will be running credit recovery. Um, we're collaborating with the technology department to provide devices. Uh, we have scheduled the week of May eighteenth, right after our graduation, to start handing out, um, devices to students that need them as well as learning kits. So every child in the K-five program will get their own learning kit with school supplies, STEM supplies, everything they need for the five-week sessions just for them. Um, on May twenty-ninth, we are scheduling a virtual open house. So that's a time when we'll go over the whole schedule with families as well as showing what kind of resources, what to do with the learning kit, excuse me, and so forth. So, um, we're looking forward to it. It's a lot of work and planning. Um, so where, our goal is to have, uh, organized lessons for the teachers already in Google Classroom built. So the structure is there and it's consistent for each child.
Okay, wow. It sounds like we are well-prepared.
Yeah, our, our goal is to really prepare, look into the future. If we have to go virtual extended, we want to make sure we provide a quality, that it's quality learning, a quality learning experience online. So that's our goal. And we're looking forward to the new curriculum and programming that we're trying. Um, as of yesterday, we had about a hundred and fifteen kids signed up. Our goal is to get up to two hundred and twenty. So I'm sure we'll meet that because teachers are calling now.
Mm-hmm. Ms. Jeter Freeman, did you hear tutoring this summer?
I heard tutoring, and I was wondering how that would look. So the tutoring is also within that timeframe?
Well, uh, the tutoring is going to, the, it's a organized curriculum for K-five. So they'll get instruction, online teaching and reading, math, STEM projects, and movement for the K-five. We have tutoring for any middle school students who need extra support, as well as those accelerated kids. And they have a curriculum, two programs, Apex Nury and Alex, which is adaptive. That means that it's going to be customized, an online program, customized for each child at their level with a teacher providing support for those hours every day.
Okay, so will all of our students now have a Chromebook? Or the ones that had Chromebooks, do they have to turn those in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I, I can. So, so what, what our plan is, is that, uh, within the next couple of weeks, and we'll talk about this a little bit, um, little, little later in the meeting, is to retrieve all of the Chromebooks that we have distributed.
Okay.
When it goes down, get, get them ready for summer.
Okay.
Then as we head into the fall, we begin a place where we can distribute a Chromebook to every student.
Okay.
That they can take home with them. That is the plan. And we are working diligently and, and, and Lucas probably nodding his head. He's not talking. We are working diligently to try to ensure that, and again, some of that falls on money too. Some of that falls on funding as well, but to ensure that we can, heading into next year, provide a Chromebook to every student, at least two through twelve. K-one may be a little different, but at least two through twelve.
Yeah.
Support them. But that, that's the, that is the contingent plan right now.
Okay, and then the STEM part of it. You know, this, I think, is a great opportunity and a good time to infuse the little coding. Uh, because we're taking care of the students that's at the bottom of the scale. But we can, I don't know how we open it up so that those students that are sitting around, they have nothing but time. And when I did go to, uh, NSBA, and I sat in on the Apple coding, and they actually walk you through. So I knew how to code to get this little thing to go and pick up something across the little lake and stuff. But I think it's a good opportunity to look at some basic coding for, uh, and, and I'm not sure what grade level that would be, maybe, I'm not sure. But, uh, some enrichment online, um, coding. Because just like COVID happened, coding is going to be the basis for everything this next generation will be doing. So they'll need to understand the behind of how things happen, uh, I think.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. We actually had STEM classes at the middle school this year. And they actually in- incorporated coding. That's part of the curriculum. So sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, Mrs. Delmarie Watts, I, I was in there a couple of times this year when she was actually going through that with the students. We had, we purchased an online program, STEM Fuse, for the STEM classes at the middle school, probably about three years ago now. So they get that. Um, we will have, coding is infused in the defined learning curriculum. That's K-eight, the new online management system. So that'll be part of that program. Uh, so they'll have that every day. They'll have the music one day, then the next day they have the gymnastics movement. So the enrichment is every other day, but STEM is every day.
Wonderful. Anything else about summer school?
No, just.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just move on. How about our meals? What, what's going on in the district with, uh, making sure that we're taking care of our families?
We are, um, we're averaging roughly, um, eleven fifty to twelve hundred meals, uh, we're serving on Wednesdays.
Okay.
We are still, um, providing seven, five to seven days, of course, depending on how, you know, how, who's eating it. But standard five to seven days of meals, uh, per, per family. Um, we've, uh, we've got a lot of, uh, a lot of folks that, um, have asked for, um, some support. Uh, we've done a couple deliveries. Uh, we're, we're doing everything we can to try to support, um, support folks in this time of need. What we will do within the next three weeks is we'll transition from traditional to summer, to summer, uh, food. And our goal right now is to continue providing the, uh, the service out of the three locations ver- versus our traditional summer program where we go out to different sites, uh, just safety-wise. We're still getting, we're still getting almost the same amount of meals on a daily basis. Not as many, but we're still getting quite a few. But, uh, right now, our plan is to continue, um, continue the same process until we get, um, until we get a little more guidance, just simply because it's safer at this point. It's, it's safe, man. And folks are finding their way to, to the three sites. And, uh, we're, uh, you know, we're, we're providing as much as we can until we run out.
Okay. Have we run out?
Several times. Several times. Yeah, several times. Mm-hmm. We, we, our, our hours are from eleven-thirty to two.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, we, every week, we've, we've, we've packed more. And, you know, at, at around, well, excuse me, eleven-thirty-three and about two-thirty, two-forty-five, we, uh, we run out. And then what we have done though is we'll make a call to one of the other sites and send a card to, to the other site.
Okay.
Um, folks have, have, have got a sense of the timeframe. And, uh, we're, we're continuing to provide whatever we can until we run out.
Okay. Uh, item D, curriculum update, electronic learning, student participation count. And again, the technology.
So I, Lisa, I'll start and then I'll let you, let you finish. Um, so as I stated before, we're in a process of developing a plan for a one-to- so as I stated before, we're in a process of developing a plan for a one-to-one rollout in the fall. Of course, depending on um, you know, uh, some other, you know, other auxiliary things, funds, school schedules, so on and so forth. Um, Lisa and her group have done an outstanding job with getting ready for the summer. Um, Lisa and, and her group have also, we just also purse, are in the process of purchasing, what is it, Lisa, a hundred plus, a couple, over, a little over a hundred hotspots?
Yeah, a one hundred and ten.
One hundred and ten hotspots. We, we've just purchased those. So uh, as we head into the summer for those kids that may not have connectivity, uh, we'll provide them with a device and a hotspot. So we are, we are working a plan. Uh, as things change, we're talk, we're trying to adapt. But we're in a good, believe in a good preliminary place with, if we have to do some aspect of re- remote learning or not, that kids at least two through twelve will, will have devices. Lisa, you go ahead.
Okay, I would say the teachers and students and families, everyone's doing a wonderful job keeping up with the remote learning. I know it's been a challenge. I'm sure some of the families, parents are kinda tired, especially those that had to help, you know, with some of the work. Um, we, looking at the numbers, we, we've been running ninety percent or higher participation for students. Last week, it was the first time it dropped down a little bit in the eighties. But every building was eighty-five percent participation or higher. And our teacher classrooms, as far as wa- monitoring that Google Classroom, ev- every building is at one hundred percent there. Um, looking at what's happening with our help desk last week, um, where it used to be a lot of calls, that's decreasing some. People are more comfortable with the technology. But eighteen staff members called in for support, thirty-two parents and/or students called in for support. So we, that's something we still wanna continue to provide, to make sure there's no glitches that happen. But I just have to give all credit to the buildings, the teachers, and the administrators for keeping up the work. Um, families are still coming to central office to pick up paper copies or, or um, some of our special needs students, we were issuing Chromebooks to help them even more. And I had a nice testimony from a father. He said he has one daughter in our district and a son who's at a private school. And he raved about his trotwood teacher who's been in touch with him every single week regarding his daughter to make sure she's okay doing her work. And he just wanted me to congratulate the staff and everything for the efforts that the teachers are making. So we were excited about that, cuz he talked a long time and we listened and I told the teacher. But um, i- it was just, we've gotten some good feedback from families.
I do have one question. Have we had any feedback um, as it relates to teachers? Do all of our teachers have Wi-Fi? Cuz you talked about the one hundred and ten hotspots. Do any, do all of our teachers have the um, appropriate technology at home, or have we had to help any of them out?
Well, we've issued um, what, I think, three years ago, we bought laptops for every staff member. So our, our staff members, every, every one of our staff members, certified staff members have, have laptops that are, are, that are district-issued devices. Lisa, maybe Lisa can speak to if there've been any, any connectivity issues. But I haven't heard anything with that regards. But all of the teachers have devices. Lisa can speak to whether or not they've had like internet.
Um, that's a great question. I, if, if there are teachers with that problem, I've not heard about it yet. We're on um, Google Classroom or Zoom and Google Meetings often, and with teachers often, and they all seem to connect with no problem. All the buildings are having weekly staff meetings. And they're also still doing their teacher-based team meetings. So I've not heard of any teachers that haven't been able to access or have had challenges. Um, but I could, you know, that's a question I can pose to the help desk to see if any of them are calling them and, because they, they'll confide in them with some things that they may need. We can find out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And, and Luke corrected me. It's been, this is the second summer since we passed out the devices. I'm sorry. I, I gave him one additional summer. Thank you, Luke.
Okay, if there's no other discussion on that item, we'll move on to the school year end closure process and dates.
Well, we um, we have collectively uh, discussed earlier, uh, what, you know, what a early closure would look like. And then the governor came out with his guidance with regards to ensuring that school finishes out. What, one of the things that we're gonna do is, over the next um, next couple of days, we're gonna make a uh, determination on when we're gonna stop issuing new assignments. And then allow kids, teachers, everybody to kinda wrap things up within the next couple of weeks. Uh, we don't want anybody to have a misunderstanding that we're, that we're not gonna do some of the same things that happened in a traditional school year, the last week of school, some fun activities, things like that. So um, over the next uh, next couple of days, we'll, we'll talk about that and, and we'll get a, a drop-dead date. We, we had thrown some dates around, but we'll get a drop-dead date. And then I'll share that with the board. So you guys will know that after this date, we won't issue any new assignments. Now, kids will still have the opportunity to close out, submit um, submit work that they need to get turned in. But any new assignments, we uh, we, we're putting together a drop-dead date for that, and we're gonna sit, we're gonna send that out. And then um, as far as just the closeout procedures, we have, as of this week, um, allowed, excuse me, the principals to set up schedules for staff to come in in small groups to start their year-end closeout procedure. Coming in, cleaning their classrooms, turning, turning in whatever items they need to turn in. So the principals have schedules, and this will take place over the next, next two, two weeks per se before the end of the year, so we can get everything out of the buildings, everything closed up. And then once all of the teachers are out, we're gonna bring in the uh, the maintenance crew, and we're going to sanitize the buildings again. We're gonna come in and um, and spray the buildings down, and then start our traditional, traditional summer cleaning. So we're in that process right now of getting teachers in. There have been a few requests from some students, mostly middle school and high school, not many, to come in and get some things out of their lockers. So the principals are also establishing some schedules, but we're keeping the numbers down. Teachers are not coming in, socializing, everybody's not in having the end-of-the-year parties like we've traditionally had. We're uh, we're putting some plans in place, and each principal is responsible for creating their own schedule and working with the custodians. So folks are coming in in phases to get uh, those end-of-the-year duties done, to ensure that we close out not traditionally, but like we have, all of the same stuff is, is done and turned in. So that process has started. It started uh, middle of this week and heading into the next two weeks.
Okay. Any questions? Let's talk about our upcoming summer retreat uh, date. Mr. Howard, you and I talked a little bit about this last week. Um, having an opportunity to do a virtual platform, um, such as what we're doing now, including our administrators, uh, giving some up, district updates, uh, really and truly exploring the best practices and how we move forward. Were you able to solidify um, a date uh, that would be most conducive for the staff? I know we talked about um, possibly doing it on um, Saturday before the end of June, right? Because the assistant principals and those folks are not in after that, correct?
Right, exactly. So uh, the day, the day that I looked at was, I'm sorry, was either the uh, possibly the nineteenth, that Friday, or the twentieth of June. Um, and tho- those are, again, those, those are days that everybody's still working. Um, once you get into that next week, your, your uh, your two-twenty-ones, your two-twenty-sixes, all those, they start dropping off. And they are, they're off for the, for the end of July, I mean, end of June through the third week of July. So uh, I figured, you know, just for a recommendation, the best date would be the nineteenth or the twentieth. And again, those, those folks are, everybody is still working at that point. And again, that would be um, you know, Dr. Cosby's meeting that she was running, so hopefully that'd work for her as well. Um, but um, that was the uh, that was the best case scenario, that the nineteenth or the twentieth, that sometime that Friday or that, or that Saturday. Friday, everybody's still working. And then Saturday morning would be, again, similar to one of the retreats we've had in the past, and just be virtual if that's the platform we choose. But those are the uh, the two dates I, I kinda wanted to throw out there.
Um, I wanna open it up for discussion for the board, if I could. Um, I know many of us are working from home. So um, the Friday, even though the staff's in, we may not be in. And the twentieth is a Saturday, correct?
The twentieth is a Saturday, yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Bosman, how does that look for you?
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have anything.
On either of those days?
On either day, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jeter Freeman?
I'm good with either day.
Okay. Um, Mr. Andrews?
Um, I, I'm gonna say tentatively that I'm, I'm good for either day. However, because I have been uh, in, in currently um, essential personnel a- at the base, uh, Friday may be kinda problematic. Um, but I'm thinking Saturday may be, may be more favorable, but, but we can see how it goes. Cuz I might be in a position where I can take a day or something like that.
Okay.
It may be.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't want you to have to take PTO if, if you don't have to. Okay, um, what I'd like to do is um, oh, well, I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Scars, and we'll see what his schedule looks like. Fridays um, might be a challenge for me as well. I'd have to look at my schedule because, again, working from home, it's a i- is really just the normal workday, eight to five. So I'm sure nobody wants to get hung after five on a Friday, right? So um, we may look at the Saturday day. Um, Dr. Cosby's with us um, as well tonight on our virtual platform. And I, I wanna just ask, um, how does either or one of those dates work for you?
Um, at that point, this will be my job, so I will be available Friday.
Right, you are on the clock, right?
There you go. Fine with me. It's not like I have a big vacation plan.
Wonderful, wonderful. Um, when is your start date?
June eighth.
Okay, June eighth. So you'll be with us. And we're excited about that, even though you're really with us now, all right?
Yes, I'm very excited. And, and could I just say that I am so impressed by all the things that the administrators and the principals and teachers are doing. I just wanna get that out there. Um, I'm excited about it all.
Well, thank you, thank you. And um, I wanna extend a, a huge thank you to you. I, I know that even though you haven't had your start de- date, there's been a lot of collaboration. Uh, Mr. Howard shared with me that you guys are on the phone routinely. And a lot of the things that we're putting in place are strong recommendations that have come from you. Um, being consistent with our policies and what's currently going on in the district. So we appreciate that.
No problem. I think that we really are gonna do great. I'm excited about, like you said, and I've collaborated with lots of, everyone in, and everyone is open, and they're giving me such good ideas too. My district is benefiting big time as well. But just, I'm in right now, so thanks to everybody.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. And thank you for joining us tonight. We really appreciate you being here, and you can come anytime, all right? You can be four-star day if you like, all right?
All right.
But it is after hours. Uh, thank you. Uh, and let's see, where else are we? So we'll get back with the retreat date, okay? It will either be Friday or Saturday, but I'm, I'm leaning more towards Saturday. I'll talk to Mr. Scars, and then we'll narrow it down. And what we're looking at for a time is, guys, if we do the Saturday, our, our regular time, if that's okay, nine o'clock. Uh, we don't have to get there at eight-thirty or eight-fifteen for a virtue, for a breakfast, cuz you're at home. And then also, I will follow up with you guys on what the agenda should look like and how we can all facilitate that agenda for the retreat. Good enough? Thank you. We'll move on down. We're at the comment section uh, currently. And I have Treasures comments.
Um, while we're on, while we're talking about um, dates, can you guys look at your schedule? We need to um, have a date for the last um, meeting in June. And I'm, I'm, it's always the last Thursday in June, so June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, I would like to have our last um, meeting of the year um, for, for the um, board.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on June twenty-fifth.
June twenty-fifth. Okay, there are some items that we need to close out on the school year, is that correct? Because our regular meeting would be, we would have the fourth and the eighteenth. But you're saying that we need to make sure that that meeting is probably the twenty-fifth.
We all always have that last meeting for the year, and that just ties a bow around everything.
Yeah, we can definitely add that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's the pleasure of the board. Okay, and uh, so given that, anything else?
Yeah, yes, I, under my um, Treasures comments, I did add the Treasures update. And I can also send this um, email if you'd like. There were several things I, I mentioned on that that I would like for you guys to take a look at, and if you had any questions. So it was um, you know, our open positions, um, our five-year forecast submission, I think I've, I talked about that on the twenty-second. I talked to, um, senior capstone project. I had the, I had the privilege of actually um, judging eight of our capstone projects. And so um, I said there was a myriad of different topics, armed and gun control laws, uh, mental health is important, drug trafficking. So it, it was really a good, a, a good process. So I just wanted to let the board know that. And then the last thing on here is the Board of Revision. I got a notice from the Board of Revision that the Hara Arena property was upheld for five hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty, seven hundred and seventy dollars. They were actually coming to the Board of Revisions to have it downsized to twenty-seven thousand dollars. So I have to say, this is a very good news for us, that we won that um, in our Board of Revision uh, meeting. So just wanted to let you know, but everything is um, on um, the attachments under Treasures comments.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Mr. Howard, please?
Uh, thank you. Uh, real quick, I, I'm, I'm not gonna be long, but I, I am gonna have Janelle on board. I wanted to just to kinda give up some quick updates. Only thing I, I have is that I, I've been sending out updates weekly. I, I hope you guys have had an opportunity to just take, take uh, take a look at those. Um, if you ever got any questions, shoot me an email. My goal is just to try to get as much information out there as, as possible to assure the uh, the staff is um, just up to date on whatever, whatever's going on out there. You know, I try to tell them not to be too um, too silent on some of the things we say because they may change. But um, you know, I was giving you guys that monthly update, but these weekly ones, I hope supersede those, and hopefully everybody gets an opportunity to uh, to take a look at those. But I, I brought Janelle in. I, I just kinda want her to just give you a real quick summary of what our um, our social workers have been doing with regards to wellness checks for kids. Just so you kinda get an understanding what those folks have been doing, social workers, mental health, and how all of that has played into what, what's, what's taken place over the last couple of months. Go ahead, Janelle.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Um, just to give you a quick update, our social workers, as you guys know, we have one per building assigned. And then also, we have one mental health therapist through Samaritan Behavioral Health, also uh, per building. And throughout this state-mandated closure, the social workers have uh, literally been calling the students in their buildings, their assigned buildings. Um, and they've done it kinda like in phases. So one group that they've called have been um, the students that were listed as homeless or, and/or are unaccompanied youth. So they called them and made sure, and just essentially did wellness checks. Um, I created a spreadsheet for them, and they did a, essentially a needs assessment slash wellness check. And it included, you know, did they need packets, did they need food, or did they have transportation in order to make it to the food sites? Um, how was their mental stability, you know, how were they holding up there? Um, so it was, it was an all-inclusive kind of a quick Um, so it was, it was an all-inclusive kind of a quick needs assessment, but also it left a comment section. So, uh, through that, all of the students, like I said, that were listed in that category were, um, received one, one-on-one calls with our social workers and we learned a lot of information from those. Uh, we, we gleaned information regarding the number of families that did not have transportation. Um, so we, we set up some times to do some delivery of food for them, uh, found out those, they couldn't come pick up packets, we got those to them. So that was one section, one, one phase, if you will, of the wellness checks. Uh, but in addition to that, um, the social workers are also working in partnership with our Samaritan Be- Behavioral Health therapists. Um, because as you know, the therapists are providing tele sessions for students that were already, uh, receiving counseling, um, before we went through the state mandated shutdown. Um, so they've been working collaboratively and also trying to reach back, if you will, to the referrals that they receive from the s- social workers. And what has also come out of it is some of them have had more success in this form than they had in the building because the parents now can allow the students to have the sessions in this form versus, and they can, you know, um, accept and provide consent virtually. And for some parents, that was a barrier to come into the building, to have the one-on-one meeting with the therapist to do the consent and the diagnostic assessment, but now that can be done virtually. So the therapists have been working with the social workers to get that done and they've been continuing to provide those, those sessions. And then also our social workers have been collaborating with building principals to make sure that even some of our staff are okay. You know, honestly, um, we've had staff members that have reached out and asked for some help and, you know, some tips and strategies on how to get through this. So they've done that, but they've also helped support, uh, when the teachers have received those notifications from their students of some needs, um, mental health related. They forwarded that on to social workers as well. So they've been working ti- I mean tires le- Leslie, trying to get through all of this as, as best as they can, but providing a high level of support. Um, and I meet with them on a regular basis. We have our scheduled monthly meeting next Tuesday. And, um, on top of all of that, they've also created their own, um, rubric for evaluation, which I get a chance to present to Mr. Howard next week. So they, they've done a lot of work during this time period. So that's just a quick synopsis of what our, our social workers and mental health therapists have been working on during this time period.
I do have just one question, maybe two, I guess. Um, have you had a chance to talk to really all of the families that, well, since we've gotten out of school or have some families kind of fell through the cracks? And what about other families that may be in need who aren't homeless? How are we addressing those?
Um, we've done both, um, so I'll answer your second question first. The, the first phase was I was really concerned with those that were listed as homeless or those unaccompanied youths because, you know, they were vulnerable prior to this shutdown. And so to compound the problem with now being away from the building, I wanted to make sure we definitely called them early on and reached out. But then, once they went through that list of students, they did begin to reach out to all of the students. Um, and then it became more of the collabora- collaboration and communication between the classroom teacher, the building principal, and referring issues and circumstances to the social workers. Um, so all of the students really have, had been, or reach out or, or, um, communication has been made to those students. Now, unfortunately, we have had some, some challenges with reaching some, um, you know. So what we also did, when the calls weren't working, the emails weren't working, students weren't responding via Google Classroom, we did do a mailing of those students that pretty much we hadn't heard from. For lack of a better term, it seemed like they kind of fell off the grid, if you will. So we did a mailing to them. Um, I instructed, um, Ms. Burt to please send out a letter basically saying, hey, we haven't heard from you. We, we want you to contact us. Please feel free to contact your building social worker. And in that letter, we listed the social workers per building. So I will say that, you know, we did our best to make sure that we either called, emailed, or sent a letter to every student and every family.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Ms. Love Allen, I wanna say thank you to you. Um, I really appreciate you, um, speaking with Jennifer Lutz with the Wall Street Journal. Um, I shared with the board that the Wall Street Journal did reach out to me. Um, they picked up, uh, a news article that I was interviewed on, um, a while back. It was just general conversation, but they took a real interest in Trotlet. Um, they wanted to know how our students were doing, how our families were doing. I mean, it was a genuine concern. Um, and the fact that they zeroed in on Trotlet was even more amazing. Um, and I understood you gave a really good interview, uh, along the lines of the work that you are doing and our social service, um, people are doing and our staff as districts. So again, I just wanna say thank you, thank you for rising to the, you know, to the occasion and doing it last minute, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. It, it was an honor. Uh, it caught me by surprise, Mr. Howard sent me the, the text. So, you know, I, I was like, oh, okay, this is just the dang daily news, so let me just get my head straight. And then, exactly, and when she called and said, oh, hi, I'm Jennifer from the Wall Street Journal, I had to kinda clutch my pearls and say, okay, hold on, let's, let's get this together. This is a little different, um, but thank you, thank you. It was, it was an honor and, um, I was humbled to be able to represent the district, so thank you.
Well, you're so welcome. Um, by the way, the article's coming out tomorrow, so, um...
Well, thank you for that, I appreciate that, thank you.
This is, this big national Wall Street Journal article in Trotlet is in it. So, um, I'm just super psyched.
Yeah, does anybody have a, a subscription to that, that they can share, that we can send?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't get the Wall Street Journal.
Yeah, we'll make sure everybody gets it.
And then I can share with the district, I like to share with the district.
Yeah, guys, we are just doing some amazing things. We are doing incredible things where people are looking at us. And the fact that we've been so resilient even after what happened this time, Memorial Day. I mean, the district has had so many, um, w- we've had some things that have happened, um, some things that were, um, unexpected. And they actually are checking in, just doing a check-in, uh, across the country on how students and families are doing and how small districts like ours are doing that have been through so much. So again, I am just, we just keep doing the right thing for the right reason. Um, even unbeknownst to us, people are watching us and they are actually celebrating, um, our achievements and they are recognizing and, um, a- a- and noticing what's going on in Trotlet. So again, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Howard?
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you and thanks for the updates, weekly updates, those are good. We got a lot going on, so that, it, it's a little bit to swallow instead of trying to look at a monthly update. So I appreciate that. Do we have our student representative one this evening? Ms. Ryan Allen?
Valedictorian Ryan Allen.
Oh, valedictorian Ryan Allen.
I don't think she made it today.
Okay. And Moore just text her to ask her, was she coming on the call? So I'm not sure if she, she'll be on there or not, but she said...
Well, if she jumps on late, we'll let her talk. She is a valedictorian, we are so proud of her and, um, as, as we are with all our students. So, um, again, uh, huge, huge, huge congrats to our valedictorian and student represent- board representative. Board comments, Mr. Andrews?
Um, uh, first of all, I'd like to welcome, uh, Dr. Cosby to our, uh, to our, uh, meeting. And, and I just feel, uh, i- it's a lot I could say, I'm, I'm gonna try to really make it brief, but there are a lot of people, a- a- as you said, uh, uh, Ms. Moore, there are a lot of people in and around the Miami Valley that are pulling for us. And being out at the base and running into such a, uh, a, a cross-section of people coming from everywhere, i- it's amazing, uh, how much people are interested and, and are curious and following us and, you know, listening to what we're doing and how the, uh, the phases are going with the graduation and how we're already set up for summer school. And, you know, uh, uh, Ms. Minor said that some of the students were kinda slacking off a little bit in terms of their, um, uh, uh, learning from home. But I got a phone call yesterday too, reminding everybody that, uh, school is in until the twenty-second and to keep working, encouraging everybody and, you know, the meal drop-offs, everything. I- it's, it's to take it in, in its entirety, it is, it's really amazing. I am just, I cannot express how proud I am and how pleased that we seem to be kind of ahead of the curve on a lot of the things and, 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 uh, that need to be done. And, and we seem to be hitting all the right notes, uh, pretty much all the time with everything. And it is just, it's, it's really, it, it really makes me proud to be part of the district, uh, to see how well we're doing and, and just really seem to be making a big turn of a corner.
Thank you so much, Mr. Andrews, we appreciate your comments. Um, Ms. Jeter Freeman?
You know, I would just wanna say pretty much the same thing. Um, Mr. Howard, you, you know, you stepped in unexpectedly and you've just done an amazing job and outstanding in pulling, uh, together the staff, the administrators and, you know, all through all the challenges, you've been that person that the district staff, the parents and everyone respected and you gave that sense of calm and you have truly, um, helped us tremendously. For the board, well, for myself, for the parents that I've talked to, uh, we really do appreciate you and I think the team we're gonna have with Dr. Cosby and our administrators, Ms. Love Allen, Ms. Minor and, uh, Ms. Allen, I really, really, really do thank you because you all exemplifies, uh, excellence in all you do and I just appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeter Freeman. Uh, Madam Vice President, Myra Bozeman?
Yes, again, kinda echoing the same sentiment. Thank you for everything that you're doing, a lot of information tonight, a lot of stuff I need to think about and continue thinking about. Thank you, Ms. Allen, Mr. Howard, Ms. Minor, Ms. Love Allen. A lot of stuff for me to kinda mull over to, you know, think about for the next meeting. Um, the virtual graduation sounds great, I'm really impressed with it and I'm really excited about it. I kinda wish I had one of those, you know, because it really sounds like a really great keepsake for our students and it seems like they're really appreciating it and it sounds very touching. So I'm really glad we were able to pull that out for our students. So thanks to everyone who is really putting in a lot of that hard work and effort to make that possible for our students. That's it for me.
Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Bozeman. My only, I just echo everybody else's comments. Um, I don't wanna start saying thank you cause I know I will miss names, so I think Ms. Bozeman had that covered. That we, I'm just so proud, I am such a, a proud board member, uh, about all the things that we are doing. I'm excited about the virtual graduation, I'm excited about every step to the virtual graduation. It's almost as if we are just going over and above and doing the right thing for the right reasons at the right time to let our students know how much we are, are pr- how proud we are of them and how we know that celebrating their achievement is so important, especially at, during this time. So again, the story that you told, Mr. Howard, about the kids, you know, they were so excited, there were tears, the teachers were so excited, eighty percent of our staff showed up for the pickup. I just think that, um, that is the type of energy and the enthusiasm that has made us who we are. We are a district of, of kindred spirits, we are a family district. We truly, Ram Nation is strong and rooted in just being good and kind and doing as much as we can to make our students successful. So again, I'm just super, super, super excited. Um, I now need a motion to move into executive session and its resolution to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual per Board of Education Policy Zero One Six Six and O R C One Twenty One Point Twenty Two G One and B to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response programs for a public body or public office per O R C One Twenty One Point Twenty Two G Six. Official action may be taken. Can I get a motion, please?
So, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you call the row?
Yes. Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes, we will adjourn into executive session. Uh, it's seven sixteen P M. And I just wanna thank everybody who has been on the call. Thank you for your insight, thank you for your input, thank you for hanging out with us this evening. I would ask for, uh, Dr. Cosby to join us, if she's still here, um, during this executive session. So we'll have everybody disconnect, look, you can tell me when, and we're good to go. Board will take a few-minute break.